All right. I'm sorry, Mr. Pizzulo? Mr. Pizzulo, is it okay if we start? Okay, great. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is our Borough Council Caucus Meeting, May 9, 2024. Can we start with the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, can we proceed with roll call, beginning with our esteemed mayor?
Mayor Hapkins.
Present.
President Monroe.
Present.
Vice President Ruhlclout.
Present.
Counselor Beatty.
Present.
Counselor Truhart.
Present.
Counselor Trent.
Present.
Counselor Peets.
Present.
Counselor Johnson. Solicitor Kilkeny.
Present.
Benoni Engineering.
Present.
Tax Collector Hughes. Finance Director Nichols is present. Madam President, you have a form.
Thank you very much. Next, we will move on to our citizens' forum. I have one forum. Are there any others coming? All right. So Ms. Alex Navaj, Alex Navaj, Liz.
I'm really kind of fond of Sharon's Akka Akka.
Oh, Liz Akka Akka, come on up.
Question about the newspaper newsletter delivery. How are they being delivered? Because I've not received one. Want to make sure that Sharon's minion didn't have my address deleted the way they did my email address. A neighbor witnessed what she believed to be prostitution near Kerr Field. Neighbors, please call 911 if you suspect people are hanging out soliciting prostitution or drug dealing. And certainly call if you see people being sexual on another neighbor's lawn. Police, of course, should be cruising through all the secluded spots frequently enough that no one's comfortable doing these things in our borough, but they're doing these things in our borough. We're not understaffed anymore. Additionally, there's no excuse for the police to be ignoring the commercial vehicles that are parked on our streets. All officers should be familiar with our borough's codes. Trucks aren't even supposed to be driving on the residential streets unless they're making a delivery to a Yaden resident on that street, let alone parking overnight for months on end. On Monday, I heard the Yaden Democratic Committee had been told they could no longer have meetings at Borough Hall. This is understandable for a variety of reasons. It's a partisan group. The members violate their very own bylaws and run the meetings like a private club. They refuse to inform registered Democrats when they're having meetings. The Chair of the YDC is suing the borough for an alleged injury after a trip and fall. Another committee member is suing a Yaden property owner for an alleged injury for a trip and fall. The group doesn't benefit the community as it is now, and the members are highly litigious. But in order to gain clarity as to what this meant for other groups, I sent a request on Monday for our next Yaden Good Neighbors meeting. YGN, as you know, is a nonpartisan group which welcomes participation from all Yaden residents. The meetings are publicly advertised. I have not received any sort of reply to my email. Do we now need to pay $50 per hour for a meeting? Can the library still use the auditorium for exercise classes? I've perused the hall rental application. Despite the prolonged discussion at a council meeting a couple of months ago, it's still a confusing form. I can't tell if a rental for a meeting requires a $750 deposit or not. Would something like the Meet the Candidates night that the Yaden Good Neighbors held last year be a meeting, or would that be an event? Why does the form say meetings of over 100 people require a second hall monitor, but it does not say events over 100 people need a second hall monitor? All the formatting is very confusing. The boldface is random. I don't understand what it means, and I'm pretty good at understanding things I read. So a statement of, not necessarily now, but if... Clarity. Thank you.
Thank you. The newsletters, we've always had some hiccups with the post office. We don't maintain a list of who not to send it to. That'd be too cumbersome, and frankly, I'm too lazy for that. So, you know, we'll make sure that we can, we'll check with the post office to see...
Did they mail both for the post office?
Yeah, they're both, no. They get drop-in boxes at the post office. E, every household direct is what we use to save money. We don't post them individually. So they're just...
The town, every household.
Every household direct.
So your, that entire side of town didn't get newsletters?
I know I didn't get one. My neighbor a block or so away didn't get one. I did hear somebody got one. Yeah.
Oh, that's the problem.
So we'll definitely check with the post office. We have had some issues in the past and have had to kind of stay on top of them. But we do need people to let us know when they are not receiving them so we can look into it. The solicitation event that you've mentioned, I know that the chief is aware of that, and we're going to trust the chief to do his job. And if he doesn't, we're going to trust that you'll let us know. And for the hall rental, I haven't seen the finalized version of the contract. We can take a look at it again. But the decision to have smaller groups utilize other services, other areas like the library, that would kind of make more sense, especially now that we've opened up the hall as an income-producing entity again. It's not about what they're presenting. Of course, we decide, you know, if someone is having something inappropriate, we may not, you know, even offer them a contract. But we want to make sure that we're treating this hall like the income-producing entity that it is. So I believe when I was reading the contract, while we were revising it, that the word "meeting" and "events" were kind of used interchangeably. So maybe we'll just stick with one or the other. But we can definitely revisit it again and get back to you about that. And knowing that the school district also offers a very heavily discounted rate to citizens and organizations, I think it's what, like $5 per session if you ask to use it? Those areas would be probably, would be more appropriate for the smaller meetings. So, but we will get back to you. Someone should have responded. But, okay, so we'll get back to... All right. Anyone else for citizens' forum?
So the exercise group that's going to be in the library?
That's something that we'll have to, that we'll have to discuss. But I mean, if they're, and also, we kind of monitor what's happening, how many people are showing up. You know, traditionally, there's been just a few people, and it's just not worth opening the hall up for liability reasons as well, especially, you know, this is an old government building. It's, and we have enough people suing us, so. Yeah. Sorry. Okay. So, yes, so Mr. Nichols has pointed out that the reason that they were permitted before is because it happens during the workday, and that someone else doesn't have to come in and open up the hall, turn on the AC, the heat during the time of year, monitor it because it is during the workday. So that I will leave to the Borough Manager. We aren't picking and choosing who can come and go. We're just trying to make it make sense as, you know, and open and available for the income that it should produce for this borough. That's been absent for too long, and we want to make sure that that returns. Because we did put a lot of money into renovating it. All right. So that's it for citizens' forum? Great. Now, let's move on to our mayor's report.
That was fast. Just, my report stands as submitted. Madam President, I do want to underscore a couple of things in my report. First of which, the mayor's citizens' forum will be held on Tuesday, June 4. And I did mention that last month's meeting, it's been changed to Tuesday, June 4. Public Safety Committee meetings are up and running in earnest. I just want to thank those who have livestreamed in and been a part of it, and I think it's going well. It's starting to really take hold for a while. We didn't have any public safety, real public safety outreach, but it's really ramping up very well. The next meeting will be held on Saturday, May 25, at 9:30 on Zoom. The information will be posted on the website. All citizens, all residents are welcome to attend, to log in, to zoom in, and be a part. The, been speaking with the chief about the Crime Watch, and there are discussions. I want the residents, Public Safety Committee, to chime in that it might be a better bang for our buck to transition from Crime Watch to use MyCivic app because there's no additional cost with that. Does the same thing. It notifies residents. We have website efficiency, one platform consistency, and a significant cost savings. So hasn't been done, do you want to comment on that, Chief, or? Yeah, go to Mike.
We met with our webmaster, and we figured out it'd be extreme cost savings if we went to MyCivic app and just have our own website through her. She's going to actually run our website. And as Counselor Pete talked about, the push notification, well, MyCivic app will be able to do a push notification. So whomever signed up, it'll just shoot it right out. It'll be one platform. It'll be just easier than just going back and forth, and it'll save us money.
So is this your formal apology?
I actually have erasers on my pens, too, because I am willing to make...
Is this your formal apology?
Well, I don't know. When I looked at the analytics the other day, it was like 167 signed up. So, and most of those people are in California. For whatever reason, you have a couple in Hong Kong literally watching Yaden. I don't know. God bless them, but, yeah, I'll, you know, hey, I eat humble pie.
Okay. Thank you.
Is this something that would work on a computer versus a phone?
MyCivic, that would be a question for our webmaster and for, I'm not sure if it...
I literally share my phone with someone else, like, oh, I don't use a phone.
I'll give you my mobile phone if you need the phone.
Sure.
I'm not, I'm not sure.
My phone really belongs to my car. Lumber has the car, you know, one car family. Lumber has the car, has the phone in case the car breaks down.
Okay.
And I just, I don't want, it'd be nice if whatever this is does not exclude people who do not use phones.
Okay. So I feel like the...
If you can get email notification, like, right now, I can get email notification from...
Right. You may be able to register with your email address as well. But we'll check into that. But this is, you know, there's no information that should be on MyCivic app that wouldn't be on our website. So this is, this is really, creating the Yaden Borough app was just another way of, you know, getting people. So there shouldn't be one, like, one, the push notifications go, can go to emails, they can go to phones.
I believe so.
Yeah.
And the thing is, I think this would be a more robust reach in that more people are, there's some people on Crime Watch that are not on the MyCivic app. I think that it has a wider reach. So I think that's a plus. But anyway, we could continue to look into it, discuss it, and see if we could ramp up and at some point transition. But it would save us money. How much is the MyCivic app? The Crime Watch, again?
Approximately $300, $400 a year.
$300, $400, so we'd be saving that. All right. And then the other thing is that I've been very pleased with the school district responding to us on Monday, April 22. We were allowed on that date for the first time in this new convention here of the new field to allow our residents to use the track, Kerr Field, as we have a four-time to exercise, to walk the track, and even run. They don't organize run, you know, but, yeah, we can use the track without, no impediments. And they also agreed to up the time from 6:00 AM to 5:00 AM as we requested. So it seems like we're getting everything we requested, so I haven't heard any problems. So they're listening. Counselor Beatty and I have been talking to, I believe, Counselor Ruhlclout as well, Darnell Deans and the superintendent on a variety of issues. And a lot of it, no pun intended, Liz, being good neighbors also to the school district. Because a lot of things I realized... Yeah, 15, sorry. Thank you. A lot of things we realized they didn't know. I don't think they knew appropriately the Kerr Field, the importance of Kerr. And because of the situation, sometimes things have an unintended result where we're able to educate them on the importance of William T. Kerr and Flag Day in Yaden, to the point where they have also agreed to partnership with us on Flag Day, starting with putting a flag at Kerr Field. That would be nice. But Darnell Deans has agreed to, we're trying to get an oversized flag where, to really show that importance and that historic significance. And it's something that is a selling point for Yaden, and we shouldn't sit on it or underappreciate it. So it's given us an opportunity to educate this area, the William Penn School District, these five boroughs, as well as County Council. When Counselor Beatty and I went to County Council, I don't know if all of them knew also the importance of Flag Day in Delaware County. Speaking of Flag Day, we, Counselor Beatty, I'll tell you, is working feverishly, very hard to make that a really great event along with the Recreation Committee. She's going to have more to report in her, in her segment. But we have invited the governor, our two U.S. Representatives, Fetterman and Gencasi. Mary Gay Scanlon, I believe, is accepted, and our state senator, I believe, is accepted, and the Joanna McClinton, state rep, has accepted. So we're still trying to get the governor, right, Chief? We're still trying to get the governor, and we've actually invited President Biden. Hopefully, they could come. And with that being said, Madam President, oh, yeah, the date. The 75th anniversary of Flag Day, I have it as Saturday, June 14. It's just by my brain. Flag Day is actually the 14th. The technical Flag Day, signed into legislation, is June 14 every year. We're having it on June 15. We usually have it on the first Saturday closer to that date. So that's a typo. It should read June 15, okay? And with that being said, thanks for pointing that out. There ends my report, Madam President.
Thank you very much. And next, we will move on to our manager's report.
Madam President, I will ask permission to combine the Tax Collector's Report and Finance Report so that you won't have to hear my voice so many times as easy.
Are we holding off on the Tax Collector's Report until next week? And we have more information?
She submitted a report that is now public, so I can read it for the record.
Okay.
But she hasn't responded to what we discussed earlier.
I can...
You want to hold off?
I'd like to. I'd rather not present any information that'll then have to be retracted.
Understood.
Or incomplete. So we'll just, you know, with the public's grace and permission, we're going to hold off on our Tax Collector's Report until we can verify some things first. And we'll have it for you next week either way.
Okay, with that, MyCivic app asking that residents sign up for MyCivic app, I am 90% sure that you, if you sign up with your email, that you also get email alerts because it is tied to the website. We are working hard and diligently to beef it up. Crystal and I thought that, Crystal's more tech savvy than I am. We thought that we can do some things, but the webmaster is assisting us now, and we are being trained to do a little bit more. But one thing, as we look at the insights, we see that we do, it's highly recommended that more residents, you know, sign up for MyCivic app. I believe right now we have a little over 200 residents, so we're asking if we can just put the word out to other residents to sign up for it because, again, we will be able to do the push notifications, and there's a lot of information that is on MyCivic app. The same with our social media sites. We're trying to, a big push to have people follow us on Facebook, X, and Instagram. So if you, we're putting information on there, but we don't have a lot of followers, so we're trying to get our numbers up. As some of you may know, there were about four or five different Facebook accounts, Twitter accounts, and everything else, but now we have official Yaden Borough accounts, and we just would like for people to follow if you are on those social media platforms. We're also in the process of updating E-code. There was a situation with some stuff with E-code that has been resolved. Things haven't been uploaded to E-code since 2022, if I'm not mistaken, early 2022. So we do have all of the documents ready to go. We've worked out the issues that we have with them. So you'll be able to get that information, you know, very, very quickly now, which you should have been able to get in the past. Also, I wanted to give an update on Republic Bank. I know a lot of residents had concerns about what happened and transpired. Of course, we did not know in advance. I have been in constant communication with our relationship manager at Republic Bank. We meet now every two weeks. For the next 90 days, everything will remain the same. Fulton Bank will come to the meeting around day 45 or day 50, and we'll start a transition. But right now, everything is solid and secure. Fulton Bank and Republic Bank use the same, use the same platform. So Fulton Bank was able to get right in to make sure that everything was okay with all of our deposits. There's no concern at this time with deposits. They're still fully insured and no checks欠bounced, so that's a plus. One other thing, just so you all know, I don't want to instill the school district's thunder, but they had a meeting with Ms. Sapp, myself, and we in turn had a meeting with our Borough Engineer. There's a proposed project for an expansion at the two schools across the street that will be taking place, adding some additions and potentially access role in between the two parcels to minimize some of the traffic congestion that's happening right here at Church and Belly. I don't have, well, we were asked to give limited information because it's still in the early stages, but as we receive additional information and our engineer reviews, we will share with the public. I believe the anticipate, they would like the anticipated start date to be around December of this year. So as we get more information, of course, we'll bring it to you all. Again, proposed resolutions or considerations, Madam President and Council, will be an AP list, a cash balance report, and the Solicitor, I know, will have some proposed ordinances that we need to adopt as well. Chief, I know you have some proposed ordinances, so there will be about six or seven that will be presented at next week's meeting that I know will come up in different reports. I always say I don't want to take your thunder. There ends my report, Madam President.
Madam Chair.
Madam Vice President.
I would like to ask Mr...
Enter the mic, please.
Oh.
Sorry. I would like to ask Mr. Nichols, just to give the residents some pros with respect to utilizing MyCivic app.
Some pros?
Yes.
So if you report a incident, for example, you can take a picture right then and there, that information will go to the respective departments instantly. So, and you can track it as you report. You know, an email comes to, right now, I think, Listen, myself, Crystal, and Mike. So we can track, follow, and everything, and make sure that things get done. It goes into a cloud. We follow it. There's follow-up. You receive emails back that you, you know, that is complete. If there are lights out, you can do that instantly. We can get in touch with PICO. It ties right to the website. You know, agendas for this meeting can be posted there if there's an emergency that's happening right now. We can get that out. Sharing information is faster for you all to get things to us because it literally dings our phones. It doesn't wait for us to check our emails, per se. We get it, like, instantly, and we can get on it rather quickly. Abandoned vehicles, you know, that's a section that has been helpful in the past. High weeds and grass, I know that was one thing we were able to get on immediately. So there are a lot of pros to it because it's faster for us to, well, if...
Automated.
It's automated. That's a good way of saying it.
And we've used it before, and we've noticed that, you know, I remember we would, like, multiple people would get emails as well. So there would be an increased level of accountability there.
Correct.
So my suggestion would be that we create, like, a postcard and kind of send that out for every household.
And we're going back to making sure that it's in every newsletter moving forward.
Yeah.
You know, all those places so people can kind of know. I think we're all putting it in our emails at the bottom, just so that people can know to sign up for MyCivic app, but it's...
And maybe as a banner across our website as well.
True. Okay.
So this is one more way that residents can have to communicate, direct communication with Yaden Borough.
Correct.
So that's a good thing because I hear a lot of people saying, oh, I don't check the Borough website, so forth and so more. Well, here's another form that you could use to communicate with us. So there will be no reason why we can't hear from the residents because you're going to have direct communication.
Correct.
Counsel President, I have a question. Okay, I think Counsel Truhart.
Madam President. So I just wanted to, just for the sake of residents who are maybe not here, when it comes to Fulton Bank and that whole transition, just to make people aware because we are taking a lot of time to make sure that we're being transparent and making sure that our residents stay up to date on what's going on. And certainly, our treasury, you know, our council, when it comes to taxes being held at Republic Bank, just so everybody knows that the federal government came in and made the determination on a Friday.
Correct.
That Republic Bank is no more, and Fulton Bank was notified that same Friday night, right before it hit the papers for the rest of us to know. So just to make everybody comfortable that when we, as customers, and I know because my CDFI use Republic Bank, when we found out the morning after Fulton Bank found out the night before. But it is a smooth transition because they're using the same systems.
Right.
So you haven't even had to go in and make any changes to how you access your account. And they're doing a good job making those assessments and, you know, to fully review everything before anything else has to be notified to their customers if any changes have to be made.
And Counsel Truhart, I just would add, I did receive a letter from Fulton Bank today outlining pretty much what you just said. So this letter that I received today will be posted to the website to offer additional assurances to residents.
All right. Thank you so much. Counsel Beatty?
Thank you. So I have a question about the MyCivic app. I'm in the Apple Store, and what's coming up for me doesn't look like what I think it's supposed to be.
So it's the Yaden Borough app. So if you look up Yaden Borough, so MyCivic app is kind of the platform behind it that runs it, but they created, that's...
That one there.
Yes. They created an app for, MyCivic app created a Yaden Borough app. So that's the, that's what powers the Yaden Borough app.
So that answered my next question because I was going to ask you, why do we have a Yaden Borough app? So...
That's it.
Okay.
Yeah, that's just the company that runs it.
Okay. All right.
All right. So, may I introduce? We are, our Solicitor's report.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. My report is actually going to be, I don't want to steal, I have part of the engineer's report, part of the police report, but what the police will, the chief will enunciate when he gets to his point. We will be asking for permission to introduce an ordinance to be publicized, to be voted on in your next meeting. It's on the immobilization of vehicles booting. So you will be hearing about that from the chief, and the engineer will give you another report. Are there any questions that I can answer about anything?
About booting, the ordinance, the proposed ordinance, about booting. So...
And it's revisions to an existing ordinance?
Correct.
Okay.
It's revisions to an existing ordinance. We just changed the language because of, the language in your initial ordinance had the governance by parking meter maids, actually used the word meter maids. So we took that app, gave it to the police. And we also, we also defined, because now you're booting, booting is, it's a wide range of things with me, so use immobilization, which many vehicles can be utilized that way, many machines.
I'll wait to see the revisions of the original before I ask any more questions.
So, question? I did, yes.
Forward it to all of Council, just to see if my facts do what we're saying.
So you sent the original and the revision to us today? I did not send you the original. I sent you the revisions. Okay. If I can, I can't send you the original. I sent you the revisions. If I can, I can send you the original, I sent you the revisions to the, to the original, which have been reviewed by the chief. So I have a part to my question, so this might be what the chief, um, saw on hold, my question to. Thank you, thank you all.
And the report?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so now we will move on to our engineer's report.
Thank you, Madam President, uh, good evening.
Good evening.
A couple, a couple of things on my report and a couple of things that I just wanted to give an update on. Um, happy to report that the, uh, county CDBG, uh, grants were announced today and Yaden got a hundred and fifty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to do the, uh, replace the sanitary sewer on Myra Avenue. Um, now, that's a hundred thousand dollars less than what we asked for. Um, and, uh, we have been talking with, uh, Mike and, um, there's, there may be a more dangerous situation, um, on another street. So we'll work with the county, but the good news is that, that there's a hundred and fifty, almost a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars that was made available today through the CDBG grant process. Um, at the, uh, I wanted to announce that at the June meeting, the, the, the largest project that we're working on right now is the TA set aside project, which is the, the, um, 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 traffic control medians, uh, and the upgrades to, um, the partial upgrades to the signal on, um, uh, on, uh, on Cobbs Creek, West Cobbs Creek. And we'll have to do a pump to satisfy the granting agency, uh, DVRPC. We'll have to do a public he, hearing next month to present the plan so the public is able to see exactly what revisions are being made to the street, um, in way of these medians and ADA ramps and those type of things. So, uh, just making you aware that that, that'll be a presentation at the June meeting, um, so that we can satisfy the granting agency that we presented the plan to council and to the public, comments were taken, um, and then those comments, uh, if necessary incorporated into the plan. Um, and then a couple of things that are, that are not on my report, and I think this is what the solicitor was alluding to. Um, so the two demolition projects, again, we were notified, we had, we had had those applications into the county for Fern and Longacre. Um, he had, we were notified today and, and we, we, we kind of know the process because we've been through it many times with them. Um, so we asked for eighty-five thousand, we, we asked for in excess of eighty-five thousand dollars for both properties because in our opinion it's going to cost more than eighty-five thousand dollars to demo them, especially the, uh, the twin property. So, um, the county came back today and said that eighty-five thousand dollars is the max, uh, so they're looking for additional information from us to support the, the additional funding request. So we'll get that to them in the next week and then, uh, hopefully we'll be able to move forward, uh, with both those projects. And then just a reminder that at last month's meeting, you authorized us to go out to bid, uh, for the, um, the, the, uh, the signal improvements at, um, McDade and Church and the one-way, making one, making McDade one-way, um, in the eastwardly direction. So we will be taking bids prior to the June council meeting and then hopefully if those bids are in accordance with the, with the grants we received, then those, that, that can be considered for, for awarding, um, at that meeting. Uh, we did have a meeting today, our first meeting at, uh, right here at the intersection of Church and Bailey with the chief and with Mike, um, to go over the improvements to that intersection because the, uh, the six hundred thousand dollar plus grant that we got there. And then we continue to make, I think, making progress on the Hereford Place, um, drainage issues. I talked with their engineer yesterday, talked with the solicitor, so that continues to move forward. That's all, that's the end of my report unless there are any questions.
Thank you for the money.
Okay, yeah, more money, more money.
Uh, yeah, I have one, one follow-up, Madam President?
May.
Uh, just, uh, is there a timeline on the, uh, one-way and, and there's also the, uh, the traffic light renovation there?
At Church and Mc.
Yeah, Church and McDade.
Yeah, so, uh, again, we're taking bids, uh, council authorized us to go out to bid, it's out to bid as we speak. Um, we'll be, or, I'm sorry, it's going out to bid next week. Um, we'll be taking bids prior to the June council meeting, um, assuming again, if everything's i- i- in budget, um, then the council would award at the June meeting, give us about a month to put contracts together. Um, so hopefully, and we already got the, uh, the, the longest, the longest lead time we've had there is, is, uh, going way back when council had hired, uh, even before I came on board, uh, our firm came on board, council had hired traffic planning and design. So another firm has actually, has actually gotten the permitting and put the plans together. Um, so, um, uh, but if, if we would award at the June meeting, about a multiple contracts together and then, you know, hit the streets, uh, sometime in, in August, um, with, with. The good news is, good news is that we did, good news, bad news, one of the accidents that occurred there recently, um, replaced a mast arm and a, um, a pole mast arm and the controller. So we're able to now take that out of the bid, so I'm very, very confident that we're going to be underbid because of the fact that we're, we don't have to replace all the, the, um, the hardware in that intersection. So that's, that's kind of good news in that we, you know, there was an accident, uh, I guess there was reimbursement from insurance companies for that, uh, but at least we don't have to, in our, in our original, we had anticipated replacing everything, but we don't have to do that now.
Thank you.
All right. There's no other questions and I'll, excuse me.
Thank you very much. Um, next we will move on to our finance report. You did. Okay. You said that there will be an AP, you did. You, 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 you put, you put a one-liner in there.
Well, I'll say this because I didn't forget it in the management report, just a reminder that the caucus meetings for June, July and August are, uh, set, uh, canceled for the summer break. Uh, council already voted on the calendar for the year and June, July, nor August included the caucus meetings, for the record.
Everyone heard that, he got kind of low. We got one more day to ourselves. All right. Um, so ordinance and zoning?
Hey, hi, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, how you doing?
I'm going to get my report off with eight fourteen Longacre is still ongoing issue, um, as they are still operating the auto business repair out of that property. So I'm asking South Longacre, the previous owner litigation about the ownership. The new owner hasn't contacted yet and they haven't responded to any citation regarding the property. A lot of people aren't interested in it, it's currently being demolished, uh, as we speak. They have the proper permits and are taking the proper precautions, um, to make sure that, but we did have a complaint in the area that, we had a lot of dust due to the demo. So they do have a water truck out there as we speak to, uh, damper that dust down from the construction debris. Ten twenty-four Church Lane is Frankie Francis property, that's still an ongoing issue. Um, we're from, pretty much at a standstill with that. Um, we do have some assistance with our, uh, legal team. I know she's trying to conjure up something as far as plans, uh, probably to move forward to remedy that issue.
Are we still citing?
Yeah, Frankie Francis.
Daily.
For, uh, Washington Woods as well.
Okay.
They're right next to each other, so. Believe the, uh, engineer spoke of seven twenty-four Fern, but as we see it, it's still in the same state and it's still on the current market to be sold.
But we have notified the realtors?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so we've notified, we've taken action on this end to notify the, um, the realtors that the property is condemned so that they, you, there won't be a sale.
Got you, understood, thank you.
But if it comes through?
Mm-hmm.
We're expecting you to deny it, okay?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Uh, both across, they're starting to, uh, do some little renovations to the property. Um, they're currently painting the, uh, green wrought iron fence around the premise, um, to currently black. Washington Woods is still ongoing issue with their legal dumping. Um, we're currently citing as the issue arises.
Do we know how many citations, open citations we have to them and at what point we'll refer to our solicitor to take it to litigation? Is someone addressed with this again? Yeah.
We're up there because they've been cited almost daily as well.
It's Washington Woods Department.
Madam Solicitor, we'll get with you tomorrow to put that on your radar so we can take the necessary steps that we're taking with the other nuisance properties.
Uh, four twenty, oh, last week we had an issue, um, the tenants got evicted or they were moving out, but they just left water debris from the interior of the property, like furniture, trash, um, TVs, that mattress, they left all that in the common driveways and, uh, it was an issue for the residents in that area, uh, because they had no access to the rear of their property. We started to abate the property, but, uh, fortunately we got in contact with the landlord and he has claimed the absence.
Vice President?
What, eh, what, what, what property was this somewhere, where?
Four oh two South Union.
So somebody, they, they were evicted and they put all the trash in the driveway and the residents would, they were, they called and complained about that, right?
Yeah, they called and complained, but we was already on top, aware of the issue.
While they were putting it out on the driveway?
Yeah, because we asked them to stop.
You asked them to stop?
Mm-hmm, and they stopped. And at that point, they said it wasn't their problem because their, their lease or something was up and they just left it there. So ultimately it was up to the property owner to remedy the issue, which they have.
All right, I'm a little confused. Somebody's actually dumping.
Mm-hmm.
Something illegally.
Those are contents from inside the property.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
So they were just throwing out trash illegally.
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
And code was aware, they went there, asked them to stop, they stopped and nobody asked them to clean that up or anything?
No, they did clean it up. The property owner cleaned it up.
Oh, you had to wait for the property owner to come down and clean it up?
Yes, correct, well, he hired the crew to come out and clean it up.
That day?
Uh, two days later.
Two days later?
Mm-hmm. But they already been, the property owner had been cited for the, uh, the, uh, debris that was just around the property and in the common driveway.
I, I'm just a little confused, I don't understand why the police wasn't called.
They were.
Okay, I'm confused with all of this. Um, and going back.
So is the, is the question, would the question be that if someone is illegally dumping, would they just receive a citation? You just, okay, so.
Let you see the citations, allowed to leave the trash there.
Along with the property owner was cited too.
Right, but they were allowed to leave the trash there.
No, they didn't allow.
Yeah, I don't think that they could have forced them to take it with them.
We started the abating process for our highway, got to clean it up, but the property owner adhered to the violation and he did come out and, or hired the crew to come out and clean up that trash.
Okay, all right. Um, twelve nineteen South Longacre, you said the property is at a standstill, what you mean it's at a standstill?
Um, I believe the solicitor could inform you as far as.
You believe that? What's happening with the twelve nineteen?
It's not at a standstill, Counselor. Uh, we're proceeding with the, the demolition.
Oh, okay, because that's what's in the report, standstill, okay.
From, I guess from a code perspective.
Yeah, from a code's perspective, there's nothing additional for the code department to do because it's being, it hasn't been demolished, but code can't do anything else about it. They're waiting for the demolition funds to come through so it can be demolished.
Okay. Eight fourteen Longacre, um, the operation of some kind of repair business, auto repair business.
Mm-hmm.
They've been cited, issued, right? Um, we have proof that they're operating the business, correct?
Uh, yes, yes, ma'am.
And this is, um, this is a rental property, from what I understand?
Correct, it was a rental property. Um, they, he haven't currently paid for twenty twenty-four rental license. Um, he stated to us that, uh, property, he's waiting for them to move out the property so he can move back into the property.
I'm sorry. I, I didn't hear you, they, you.
I'm sorry?
They did what? It's a rental property.
Correct, it's a rental.
So what happened, you said something about a rental license?
Yeah, so he currently didn't apply for, pay for twenty twenty-four rental license because he's waiting for them to, uh, exit the property so he could move back into the property and have his, have that property, his residence, uh, the current property owner. But the current property owner is being cited for the work being done at that property.
And he should also be cited for not having a renter's license?
Correct, as well, correct.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, I'm confused.
So it just sounds like the, the property owner is trying to regain possession of the property?
Mm-hmm.
But in doing so, he's also subjecting himself to, um, to violations because he doesn't have the, like, that's not our, that's not our problem that he can't get his tenants out. He still has to pay for a renter's license.
Correct.
Uh, but is there anything additional that we can do for someone operating an illegal business out of there? Aside, I'm not, not, maybe not from the department, but.
Because the tenants are still there, right? It's still being operated in the business.
Yes, we can, I, I could send a certified letter, that'd be helpful.
Thank you, yes.
Okay, I'll talk to you.
They were having another vehicle towed onto their property as I walked here today. Like, sometimes I see a tow truck like at ten at night, they're just getting deliveries after hours.
No, that's when they work after hours, after five or six o'clock.
So I feel bad for the neighbors.
Pete, is there anything that the police can do about, I mean, does that?
We have a, I have a meeting tomorrow about this issue.
Yeah, always have meetings, the day after, we have meetings.
I, everything is yesterday and tomorrow. How, y'all get information yesterday and we get results tomorrow. So I, by, by next Thursday, I don't want any more tomorrows. For any, anyone, no more tomorrows, please and thanks.
Suck it, Cal.
All right. Thank you. Oh my, the tomorrows, yes.
So we have, we have another property that is operating, um, some kind of car business as well and I didn't, I did not see that on the report.
Uh, not aware.
Rustkin and Longacre?
So actually that, those two have coincidence, so.
It's two different properties.
Yeah, it's two different properties, but, uh, as far as that goes, uh, I believe the chief has speak as far as he was, um, having some type of rental car business, um, he was parking those cars on the street. Um, he said he wasn't operating a business out, out that location, that was his residence, but he did have his cars on the street, um, on Rustkin and South Longacre.
So that property owner been cited from the code department for operating the business?
Uh, yes, he has in the past, when he did have a numerous amount of vehicles on Rustkin and down South Longacre, but currently I don't believe so because I haven't seen any, uh, of his rental vehicles on South Longacre or on Rustkin.
Oh, you haven't seen any?
Uh-uh, no, man. Not like how I was, it was, at one time it was twenty-five Hondas on South Longacre.
He just cut it down to about ten.
I haven't seen.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, that, it's just not on your report and I know that's been an issue.
Okay.
Okay, proceed, thank you.
So Hunter Lincoln Avenue, uh, permits, he's, uh, renovating his property, um, he's doing an additional rear. Eight twenty Fern Street, he's being cited, uh, he had a vehicle fire in the rear of his property, uh, the vehicle fire caused damage to his, uh, property in the garage. Um, and the garage is still in deplorable condition due to the vehicle fire.
I'm, I'm sorry, so this fire to that property happened months ago?
Correct.
And we're still issuing citations?
Mm-hmm, so citations are being issued.
Should we just continue to issue citations to like the end of the year and then maybe we should ask the solicitor if there's something that their office can do? Should we wait until December maybe? Or should we kind of do it?
Do it.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, because he, he hasn't responded to the courts either and he, again, so.
So I think the, we just want to make it clear that, um, and this was explained to So I think the, we just want to make it clear that, um, and this was explained to me on a, on a call recently, that when they don't respond to the courts, the courts don't issue a court date for the citations, and that's kind of a bottleneck in the process, so we need to figure out how to, um, how to get past that bottleneck, and.
But I thought we had a discussion that we were going to.
We did, speak to the, uh, we did, we had a meeting with the, uh, district justice.
No, 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 we were going to have another meeting with someone else to discuss.
Yes, we did. We did have another discussion about that topic, and we still do not have a resolution from the courts. I did, I, I did. I'm sorry, I'm being vague, I don't want to get out.
Right, right.
I can.
Yeah. Yeah, no, something, something's just not sitting right here. Something's not sitting right because I feel like we're the only municipality in this country that is not.
You're not the only municipality, I can tell you.
That's what I feel like.
There's like, I can tell you right now, there's like four of them with the same exact issue.
Yeah, it, it, it should not be.
Are they all in southeast Delco?
Yes, yeah.
So this sounds like a larger issue that we, we need some, um, bigger assistance with. Okay, we'll, we'll make sure to have a discussion of one, because we are trying. I'll say that much. Um. Okay.
Uh, so 4, 430 Holly and, uh, what's the address? 190 Park Place, those property, uh, unfortunately, still are being worked on as far as, um, damages done due to a fire. So right now, we're currently, um, in the high grass, we, we, we probably got 38 abatement properties that will probably have to be cut, uh, on our behalf and to have them built, um, because the height, height of the grass is outstanding. And again, that's, that's about 38 properties as we speak. So I just wanted to make that, uh, everybody aware that we are out here, um, citing and giving, uh, warning notices to properties that are, um, found to be in uh, poor condition.
The 38 properties with the high grass, um, they're occupied, correct?
Uh, so based on the outside appearance, it don't seem that way. Um, a lot of them are vacant properties that are, were, were on a rental, um, list to be inspected, and they are vacant. But, um, just based on their appearance, it seems to be a va- a vacant property, since the grass hasn't been cut, um, since the start of the grass cutting season. Uh, 910, I'm sorry, uh, Van Roclaw, would you, you finish?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
910 Longacre Boulevard, owner's still waiting for the engineer plans to come through to find out what he's allowed to do to that property. Um, so whoever's not aware, um, it's the corner of, um, Cypress and, uh, Longacre, that property has been in a deplorable condition for at least 15 years from when I was told from the neighbors.
What, 901?
Yeah, 901.
I thought you said 910.
I know, I thought that.
Rose Street.
I thought that, 901. Uh, 14 West Providence, um, they're, 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 they're trying to renovate that property and it, and it had significant damage due to the, uh, the, uh, explosion that happened in the street. Um, and they are doing, pulling permits to do work on that property instead of demoing that property. Uh, that would conclude my report.
Okay.
I have one question.
Yeah.
There's a, um, there's a commercial property, well, a property being used as a business on Bell Avenue that has boarded up their windows? Are the boards still there?
No, so that's 1001, uh, Bell Avenue, the boards are no longer there, that property will be going up on the market pretty soon. And he has been cited, uh, with the boards on the window, because we asked him to take the boards down two weeks ago, and he had it.
No, it was more than two weeks ago.
Yeah, about.
About a month or so ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the bill, boards are down?
Yeah, but we had constant contact with him for two weeks now, so that's why we've been constantly getting in contact with him in regards to the boards, and we notified him. He was aware that, um, he was getting cited for, for the, uh, boards on the window.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
So I just want to make sure, you know, just trying to follow how the code process works. Um, and you said that, that, that he has been cited for, um, non-compliance, but now the property is going to be sold, how, how are we ensured that these are attached to the property and that it's not just turned over?
If you give the information, we can follow you.
Sure, yes, and I, I believe the title company will clean up that, that lien once it, okay, correct.
We recently did one.
Alright, I just want to make sure, because it just, it seems like the court process isn't working for us, I want to make sure that the other processes are.
Yes ma'am.
And to piggyback off of that, um, it was brought to my attention that, um, our fines are not being paid, um, um, the fines that are being issued from the police department? And cars are subsequently towed? And people can, people were just going to collect their vehicle from the tow yard, paying for their fees? But our fees weren't getting paid? How was that happening? Why is that happening, if it's happening? And what are we doing to correct it?
One incident that I know of, the individual made a payment arrangement for the citations that were issued. It's the, what's the craft name? She, she made a payment arrangement, and they shouldn't have done that. In my experience, everything is taken care of before the, the release is given for, or for anyone to get it out. So we, I did send an email, that's another issue that we need to address with that particular court.
Made a payment arrangement with the court?
Yes, or someone, they didn't make a deal, it wasn't with us. But the court issued the vote, the, the release, if I'm not mistaken?
Uh, no, uh, so in order to get a release.
No, no, I know what you're, I'm talking about in that particular incident, that what, we didn't release that.
No, I don't believe so, I think all the, all.
Because I looked into it.
So if our, if our invoices are still outstanding, we can put it back on the tow list? Am I confused about that? That we can put it back on the tow list? But we also have to, we have to have a discussion, or we have to, that. I don't understand how we're being let out of the process. I don't understand how our penalties are just being ignored?
Exactly.
And we're not even being consulted. That's an issue.
It is absolutely an issue, and it's not an issue that's new, it's not an issue that's new to us, and it's not an issue that hasn't been addressed. We have to figure out how to, how to get some movement in the, in the court system, it's, it's, it's failing us, and.
It's failing us.
Yeah.
So, Madam President, so with the, in respect to, and Madam Solicitor to the court system, so this is Delaware County Court system we're speaking of? Correct.
This is district court.
District court.
Our magistrate.
Alright, and they're under whose auspices? Are they under the auspices of the DA's department, the sheriff's department? I mean, who do they, who do they report to?
So they have, the district courts have a district court administrator who I've communicated with several times?
Mm-hmm.
And then it goes to the president judge.
Okay.
And the president judge also has a solicitor who I've also communicated.
Okay, and then that district judge reports to who?
District judge reports to, there's, there's one administrative judge?
Mm-hmm.
And then the president judge.
Okay, who then reports to the state, or?
I think she's, I think she's the top.
Okay.
Of, because it's a county, it's a county judge, so, so I don't know if there's anyone would be above her, maybe the Supreme Court of Pennsylvania.
Okay, because it seems to me that we need to have a conversation then. The, the president judge, and then if necessary, because how is that person, is that person appointed and appointed by who?
Elected.
Elected.
Okay, alright, so yeah, we need, which says to me, conversations I would think would need to be had with that president judge? And do we have to get the district attorneys, or do we have to get somebody on the state level involved?
Would you authorize me to write a letter to the president judge, because I have not done that?
But I thought that was our next course of action months ago.
I spoke to the solicitor for the president judge, I did not send the president judge a letter, but I can do that. I spoke to the lawyer for the courts several times.
Yes, I think it's fine that we, that we contact the president judge.
I will do that, and I will copy you on that.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate that.
May I be excused?
Are you still? Thank you.
You're good, good.
Thank you, thank you. Alright, public works. It's okay, we accept you as you are.
Good evening, Madam President.
Good evening.
I have a few updates on some e-waste and some. Oh, good lord. Yard waste drop-off, so we just completed our yard waste pickup, which is mandatory from the state. Um, our yard waste drop-off is the May 10th, I believe that's tomorrow. And our e-waste is May 31st, these are all at the Public Works Garage between 8:30 and 2:30. Uh, we have sold several, um, older and not so decent vehicles to one municipal. Aqua, I know it's a big issue on Yaden Avenue. I just spoke with Alan Roth from Aqua, and I spoke with the engineer about having, um, the restoration done sooner than later. Uh, I spoke with Mr. Nichols today about having, um, the paving started, or at least have the engineer get the starting and the bids and, and our line items together to get this paid, because it's, uh, it's a, it's an issue. And everybody knows it's an issue, and thank you for everybody's patience on that. Um, they should be done down there, I believe within seven or eight weeks, which is a lot longer than they thought, they ran into a little issues on that. Let's turn to Flag Day, Flag Day banner is installed, Flag Day flags will go up on Church Lane within the next day or two. The digital signs that we requested will be placed on Church Lane, probably one over on, um, Baltimore Avenue, that inlet, and then one coming up from Chester Avenue to, um, identify what's going on for Flag Day. Repair solutions. Um, that actually is the end of my report, any other questions from anybody? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So next, we have, uh, public safety.
Good evening, Madam President, councilors and mayor. The Yaden Police Department responded to 1,059 calls for service in the month of April. There were five criminal arrests in the month of April. They were, uh, one was for possession of controlled substance and other drug paraphernalia and related offenses. Another one was for firearms not to be carried, possession of controlled substance and other related charges. Manufacturing and delivering of a controlled substance and a fraudulent use of a registration plate. Then we had an arrest for simple assault and harassment of another person, and then a DUI. There were also six summary citations in the month, there was five for harassment, one for disorderly conduct. The department issued 880 parking tickets. There were 82 traffic tickets in the month of April as compared to last April 2023 when they had 35, so there was definitely an increase. We are training on the new system, the whole department, we are going to a new RMS system, which is, stands for Record Management System. It's info share, and this is going to allow us as an agency with other Delaware County agencies actually share information. It's a really good system, it was actually provided from the DA's office for the first year, so our system was getting outdated, and he actually provided the DA's office and county council with, I think it's 16 departments in the area. We are also updating our new body cam system from the great grant that we received from Speaker Joanna McClinton. They'll be in next week to do that, we're sticking with the Motorola platform, but there are going to be an updated camera. I do have a meeting tomorrow, another meeting with the William Penn School District.
I'm sorry, before you get to, uh, the, the, the body cams, I know one of the biggest issue is the storage. Well, does this, will this grant help with the storage too, or just upgrading the devices?
Just upgrading the devices.
So that's, will, will an upgraded device mean upgraded storage?
We are.
Okay.
Yeah, we had to upgrade this, we had to upgrade our storage anyway, so.
Okay, but I mean, it just seems like we upgrade the device, are we going to now have to upgrade the storage as well? No, we're good, okay.
We're good.
Thanks, because I know that was scary before.
And, um, I'm going to be meeting with William Penn School District tomorrow, because we're actually going to try to iron out some communications, so we know when events are happening, Mr. Hunter will be there. And we're going to have Mr. Dean's, Mr. Mays, and we're also going to have Gary from security, just to try to iron out, to have these communications when they have events that we know about them in a timely manner. I also, um, had the opportunity to meet with local DA, the, uh, Jack Solzimer, the DA, and the chiefs in the general area. There was a lot of talk of working together, especially in this corridor, it was Upper Darby, Lansdale, East Lansdale and Darby, working together, together, and we have been working together, sharing more information. But also, uh, not to be an alarmist, we were all talking about it, if you saw the news, what's going on in Philadelphia with Kensington? When people start getting pushed out, people have to find a place to go, so we're aware of that, um, Upper Darby's is looking at it, because I mean, they're 69th Street and with the chief Gabe down in Darby with the transit center, we realize this, so we're, we're vigilant about that to make sure. Um, and just for the good of the order before the resolution, we are having, and the fire department left, of course. We're doing a battle of the badges, police versus fire for a blood drive, it's going to be Thursday, June 6th, it's going to start at 9:00 AM, and it's going to be in the hall. And what else, what else this blood drive's really important is, if you identify as African-American or African descent, they're going to test your blood, and they're also, and one in three blood donors of African-American or African descent, they can donate to sickle cell anemia kids, so it's a, it's a pretty big deal, we're trying to really drum it up. If you know anyone who wants to give blood, please come, and if you come, make sure you check police, because they're going to ask you who you're to donate. Yeah, you're laughing, we're going to get an award for this, so if you donate fire, they're not going to take your blood, so no, if you, if you can push, we're pushing it out there. It's something I think would be good for the community to get out there and give blood, so. So, and if I could, I would, uh, ask for consideration for the immobilization of vehicles, booting, and unsettled parking violations of outstanding parking tickets ordinance.
So that would have to be at our, um, next meeting?
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Um, okay, I'm asking to publicize, consideration of publicizing this.
What does that involve?
We would do that next Thursday, because it's not on the agenda, we would be in violation of the Sunshine Act.
I think that's what I see though.
Okay.
Yeah, so thank you, thank you for advising us that you would like that on our next agenda.
Sorry.
Yes.
I'm just curious, Chief, how is this going to be enforced? Um, did we contract with towing companies, like, I'm not sure.
The, the, what this will do is this will allow us to not release the vehicles if they owe about, it's three tickets, but they have to, they're already going to citation, so obviously, if they're in citation, they're not paying the ticket, so we can go out and boot them, and they have 72 hours to come pay us what they owe, and then we'll take the boot off. If they don't pay within 72 hours, a towing company that, you know, either, whatever towing company we choose, then they'll take it to the yard, they'll hold the vehicle until they satisfy what they owe us, and owe the borough, and then we'll release the vehicle.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, um, and then, do, do you have a collection rate for the citations you're issuing? Because, you know, 800 sounds like a big number, but like, what, how many of those are we actually collecting on?
We're, it, it depends, uh, we do not have, we do not, because it goes to the court, again, the court, the court handles that, once it goes to citations, the court, the court handles it.
I, I still think that we can figure out how many are paid before they go to citation, how many go to, how many go to the court, like, the collection rate?
Okay.
Is, is, would still be, uh, a relevant question.
Okay.
Before they, we need, you know, we, out of the 800, you know, we collected, you know, 25%, you know, this, and, and the rest went to the courts, and these, this amount was collected in the courts.
Okay.
And these are still outstanding, and we need to do something in the courts.
Okay.
So, um, you said three citations, and we can put a boot on, but where does that put us in the court process?
That, they have to pay to get it out, there's really no court process at that point, because once they pay, then, then we can tell the court that they paid it, and then they'll wipe it out on their end.
You should put a boot on houses.
Stop.
Sorry. But, okay, you said three citations, correct? So when you issue the first citation, they don't pay it? After they don't pay it within a certain timeframe, that ticket goes to the court, correct?
Yes.
Then when, then you go back and issue a second citation?
No, what, what, what happens is, is they, you don't pay your ticket, and then it, then in the month, it'll go into citation, so that'll get sent over. So I, I see what you're, yeah.
So I think what you're, it's a separate issue, so like, you, you have a violate, you have three separate violations that become citations? If you have three parking tickets, is that a, is that accurate, like, if you have three parking tickets that go to citation?
And it is worded near.
It's a net building on the same citation.
Oh, okay, okay.
And you know what too, in my, it is worded in here that three or more delinquent parking tickets, so a delinquent parking ticket could be seven days you haven't paid, it's a delinquent parking ticket, it doesn't necessarily have to go in a citation for this ordinance.
So what if they just go pay one parking ticket forever? They just, they just, they're not going to pay this, so what happens to the one ticket?
And they just, they just, they're not going to pay this, so what happens to the one ticket? And it goes to court and falls into the abyss?
Yeah. No, you're, you're right. I mean, we looked into, I, I know Mr. Nichols and I looked into a couple of software applications that actually take that over and they handle the fines and then they, you know, then you, like the Parking Authority in Philly, they call you constantly till you paid a ticket or they put it on your credit re, your report.
All right, so we want to, we want to make sure that we're, you know, we're not, we, we can't put too much effort into one, you know, but by three, by three it's worth the phone call. Yeah, by three, you're worth the phone call and the boot, because we also don't want to make more work for, for something that's not really, you know, and, and, yeah, we're looking at, we're looking at multiple offenders, you know, the people who are, who are repeat offenders, I'm sorry, because, you know, it just wouldn't be economically viable to go after someone, you know, somebody's grandma who got one parking ticket one time in 1970.
Can I just add real quick? This is something that, so my mom lives in Philly, gets his haircut here, got a ticket and he was mad he couldn't pay the tickets online. We upgrading our website to, so that will help out with the ticket paying, cause people want to, they want convenience, so they don't want to have to run over the, the big ticket, so.
Can we make sure those rental vehicles are particularly-
That's part, that's on the agenda for the meeting tomorrow.
Thank you.
But I won't have any, but there will be no tomorrow, next week, I promise you.
All right. Okay.
Any other questions?
Do you know if a majority of these parking tickets are from Yaden residents or from people that don't live in Yaden?
Yaden residents.
So we should be able to collect from somehow, other than, you know, wait three violations for a citation?
I, I can say this from a financial standpoint. I don't know all of your process, but from a collection standpoint, the, there's a significant increase in the monies that we deposited into the bank from parking tickets compared to the last two years. I can say that. Like there's probably this, when you look at the cash balance report, the one column will show you what we collected year to date. You can compare it to last year. So far this year, there's probably about a $40,000, $40,000 increase from last year to the same time this year.
Okay, it's just that, what I see in the reports is like $18,000 in tickets issued, but zero-
No, no, no. On my report or his report?
Well, I'm getting from the police report.
Oh, no, I'm, I can only-
So he doesn't, yeah, we, that's why I asked him to start including a collection rate on, on that report.
That's why we're not really collecting it.
Cause they, they were all fines that were just issued too, so they're not, that, that, what you're seeing is coming straight out of system, they were fines that were issued.
Right. But then it still says, like, it's paid.
I'm sorry, gentlemen.
So month to month, we should have something in that category, based on what a piece is.
Yes, right, so that's why we're, we're asking, that's why I asked, we'll have a collection re-added, because just knowing that there were X amount of tickets doesn't really give us enough information. Counselor Pete?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to make a statement. I just went to fill up my gas at the Quality Gas Station last week, spoke to the owner and, um, he just was, he noticed the improvement within the past month or two, as far as like the let out and the parking, you know, so he, you know, he, he noticed the improvement and, uh, said, you know, said, "Good job." So just wanted to forward that to you.
I'll pass it on. Like I said, we have a great team downstairs. I'll definitely pass it on. And there's one of our great guys out there rolling, so.
Thank you all for that.
And, uh, Mayor and then Counselor Tumbart, and then we are over time.
Yeah. Uh, ju- just, just a follow-up, uh, uh, Finance Director, uh, Borough Manager, Senior, not, uh, Mr. Nichols, uh, pointed out that we're, uh, taking in a lot more revenue from tickets. Is that because we're issuing more tickets? Is it because we're, uh, uh, been more fastidious in getting the monies for the tickets? Is it because we have more officers issuing tickets? What, what do you attribute that to?
It's because we have more officers out right into, you know, and obviously the parking guys are doing, George and George are doing a bang up job. They have been, yeah, we have, G1 and G2 are doing a great job. They really are, they're, they're out there working and they're, they're really doing, and when Mr. Lewis, uh, was in for, when we had a situation, they, they all do a great job. The parking guys do a great job.
Okay, so I, I do want to underscore then, that that's one of the benefits of being up to full staff. It's not just tickets and revenue, but what else are we doing? You said the intersection thing, you know, so there are benefits, direct benefits, ROI, return on investment in being up to full staff. So, so I just want counselors and the public to, to understand that as well. It's not just, just being up to full staffing, but it has a direct, um, benefit for the quality of life of, of residents as well as our financial outlook.
Thank you.
So just as a follow-up, uh, question, and please correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding is if you have a certain amount of tickets that you're not consistently paying, that gets turned in and when it's time to get your license renewed, you don't get your license renewed. Is that the case for Yaden?
Southeastern-
Do our tickets get reported?
Uh, no, the, the court has to do that. That, that's where, the court has to do that.
I think we can.
We will go ahead and contact that president judge.
Thank you, but also re, to reiterate what, um, Counselor Pete said, I, I get that from him all the time. He's very appreciative of, of what is taking place, very much so.
Waiter on your keep, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, recreation, that fun stuff. Mr. Hunter, come on down.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The first ever Rapp Curry Invitational Track Meet was a triumph. Uh, we had 49 schools from Pennsylvania, New Jersey, uh, Maryland, Delaware, Virginia participating, over 600 kids. And I think Counselor Trent was there, um, things went smoothly.
Excellent. Excellent job.
I'll talk to him.
The mayor said he was there.
Oh, the mayor, you were there? Okay, good, good. I think what happened is that- The officers were there, it was very smooth. Yeah, it went smoothly. We, uh, we had the school district and the police department and the fire department and Public Works, of course, uh, made the whole thing, uh, operate smoothly. So it was really good. We've had, since then, we've had two other track meets. We had one last week and we had one yesterday. So track season is about over. Uh, I don't know what the, uh, situation is with the summer, but, uh, we'll have to see. Uh, we're meeting tomorrow with Chief and Gary and Mike and, uh, some others to talk about what happened on the 20th. Excuse me, so that was, well, um, remember next Tuesday, 14th of May, we're having a backyard composting workshop on the second floor, 6 o'clock to 7:30. Uh, the workshop is free, uh, we hope people have registered, it's been on the website. Uh, the Yaden Community Park, Community Garden, uh, is now underway for its fourth season. We had, uh, last Saturday, we had volunteers out cleaning up the garden and doing some planting. Uh, if anyone else wants to join the garden, it's Saturday from 8 to 10. Liz and others will work you to death. Mike was there last week, so, uh, things went well, but I think it's a good opportunity for neighbors to get together. The Yaden Recreation Department, uh, is collaborating with the Urban Roots Farms to start our fourth season, uh, of the vegetable garden. So I think that's going to go on. We had over 60 residents last year, so that worked well. I put a flyer out this weekend, so I know it's short notice, but, uh, Saturday, May the 14th, uh, from 9 to 2 at Smedley Park, right next to the Springfield Mall, uh, we have the good gardening plant sale.
You said May the 14th?
May, May the 11th, I'm sorry, May the 11th, uh, which is Saturday, from 9 to 2 at the, uh, Smedley Park next to the Springfield Mall. Uh, there's a plant sale, uh, with native plants and other things that people may pick up for their garden. And finally, as we approach summer, I think with Camp Garrett going on and also the school district, uh, I don't know if the library is having summer camp or not, but we're trying to keep on top of the summer camp opportunities. As people are coming into the borough, they want to know what's going on, so we're going to have, try to put all that information on the website.
Great. Uh, Madam Chair. Mr. Hunter, May 14th, what's happening on May 14th?
That is the backyard composting workshop.
And what time is that?
6 to 7:30.
And that's in the Borough Hall, second floor?
Second floor, yes.
That is my standing committee meeting time every second Tuesday of the month at 6:00.
That was the only day we could pick because the Pennsylvania Resource Council gave us some dates and that was the only day that would work, so can we work it out?
Can we work it out? Can you come to, can we open up chambers? Well, um, you know, no, because there may be individuals who would like to go to the, um, event, right?
Who's registered, yeah, I'm not sure who's-
Yeah, I don't know who's registered, but it may be people who want to attend. And I don't- So what about the times? Can we maybe adjust times? No.
And this was not only four months ago.
So, I'm sorry, so what we can do is, um, maybe we can just, um, maybe I'll just cancel the committee meeting, the co-committee meeting for this month, because if residents want to attend this event, you know, they should attend the event. I may even attend the event, it sounds interesting. So I'll just cancel, but I'll just ask moving forward, if I'm going to get booted, I don't mind getting booted, but at least let me know.
Is there a calendar on the Borough website?
I wanted to-
If there was a calendar on the Borough website, it would be possible for people to consult it before scheduling things.
The calendar is there? So let's just make sure that the, that all meetings make it to the calendar, cause the calendar is there. All right. So Mr. Nichols, um, or Ms. App, would you be kind enough to just, to put on the website that the co-committee meeting for next week or the 14th will be, um, canceled? Thank you. I'm not upset with you, Mr. Hunter. It's okay.
Watch your back. Watch your back.
So real quick, can I just add a little bit to, um, Mr. Hunter's report? So I wanted to talk a little bit about Flag Day again, about our parade. So for those of you who are participating, which will be council, our fire company, our police, our, we have the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts and our, um, I believe we invited Pembroke's marching band. So we will be convening at 10 o'clock at, um, TriStar, near TriStar. And that's going to be the beginning of the parade, so, um, we'll get more information probably at the June meeting, but we're going to convene there and go up Church Lane to right in front of the library. And then we'll have the first half of Flag Day be, um, the opening, where we'll have our more official things. So around 11 o'clock, 11:30-ish, we'll convene over to Kirkfield, Rapp Curry Athletic Complex, whatever the whole name is. And we will do the second half, where we'll have the more fun, festive stuff. So I wanted to let you know that we added some more activities. We'll have a line dance instructor, um, which is going to be my favorite part of the program because I love to dance, so she agreed to teach us some of the line dances that I can't seem to get, so, um, we're gonna, um, we're gonna have a lot of fun. So again, please invite your family, your friends, and there should be something for everybody, every age group. Um, if you have any questions, you can have to get in touch with us. That's it.
All right. Uh, before we adjourn, I do want to say that, um, in this, in this position where we're all working tirelessly on behalf of the Borough of Yaden, um, you know, it's, it's nice to have, uh, colleagues who take their role seriously. Um, I recently saw that Mr. Pete's made his way up to Harrisburg to, to see our, uh, state government in action and to, to learn how, how, how this, how it all trickles down to us. So, um, I like to see those types of initiatives and, um, and just, you know, taking the time out to, to learn what we do, to better ourselves and, um, so thank you for being great.
Well, thank you, Madam President. Just learning it, how to build relationships in this new world, I mean.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, this meeting, well, I'd like to ask for adjournment? Thank you, this meeting's adjourned.